Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. It's July 30th, 2024, and this is the public hearing on the contract for the superintendent of schools. Thank you all for being here. If you are joining us this evening to comment on the contract, please use the sign-up sheets located down front at podium. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Sure. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
This meeting is being held in the formative open public meetings act NJ SA 10 calling four dash six. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on June 30th, 2024. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is a violation of the open public meetings act, the whole open board of education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those and attendants aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on C A T V channel 77 to five as channel 46. The full meeting recorded will also be made available on board docs which can be accessed through the district home page. The whole open board of education is committed to preserve the form of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respect the request of all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if used, the device is necessary. We ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the pleasure.
I am the chief of flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Good, could you please call the hall?
Ms. Angley? Ms. Catmatory?
Sure.
Ms. Delira? Mr. Delator? Mr. Brana?
Here.
Ms. Hannah? Mr. Fluffel?
Here.
Ms. Norwood?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
Do you have a call?
Thank you, Ms. Good. So the purpose of this hearing is to consider public feedback on the contract for Superintendent Christine Johnson. We are very happy to present the modified contract for Dr. Johnson that represents the commitment that Dr. Johnson and the Board of Education have to the students of the public school district of Hoboken and to their continued academic achievement. The contract will be up for a vote in our regular July meeting that will begin this evening at 7:00 P. M. The contract covers a time period beginning on July 1 of this year continuing through July 1, 2029. Dr. Johnson's steadfast commitment to the district, its students and staff has transformed the public school district into one that is the envy of Hudson County and one of the top performing traditional public school districts in the county. Would you please like to add any members of the board would like to make any comments? All right. We will move on to public comments. Do you have any? Ms. Good, will you please see if we have any speakers signed up?
Ms. McGurk, no public comments.
If there are no public comments, that will conclude our meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Give me one minute.
My apologies. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So, yeah.
I was thinking, Ms. McGurk, would you put a motion?
Yes.
And then tell me what's the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any no's? All right. Have a good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the July regular Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for being here. If you are joining us this evening to, if you're joining us this evening and plan to make public comment, please use the sign-up sheet down at podium to list your preference for commenting on agenda items or non-agenda items. Again, that's down at podium. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in the formative open public meetings act NJ SA 10 calling four dash six. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 5, 2024. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is a violation of the open public meetings act, the whole open board of education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those and attendants aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on C A T V channel 77 to five as channel 46. The full meeting recorded will also be made available on board docs which can be accessed through the district home page. The whole open board of education is committed to preserve the form of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respect the request of all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if used, the device is necessary. We ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the pleasure.
I am the chief of flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Good, would you please call the hall?
Ms. Angley? Ms. Catmatory?
Here.
Ms. Delera? Mr. Delator? Mr. Brana?
Here.
Ms. Hannah?
Here.
Mr. Fluffel?
Here.
Ms. Norwood?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
Do you have a call?
Thank you, Ms. Good. This meeting is a little bit different because we don't have any student recognition since we're now here in the middle of summer and we don't have any reports from our student representatives. So I will ask, Dr. Johnson, do you have a superintendent's report for us this evening?
Thank you. I have two items that I would like to record out on tonight. Both of them are coming out of the classes from our committee meetings. The first topic is going to deal with enrollment, and the second topic is our new middle school sports program. So I was asked in one of our committee meetings to provide an update on enrollment for the district. So what I would like to do is break down some of our numbers in terms of where we are right now as of today at a pre-pay level, a kindergarten through fifth grade elementary level, a sixth through eighth grade middle school level, ninth through 10th grade, ninth through 12th grade high school level, and then provide you with the updated numbers for kindergarten through 12th grade and then pre-pay to 12th grade in comparison to last year's numbers. So our pre-pay numbers as of October of the previous school year were at 964 pre-pay students, and we currently have 991 enrolled at this time. Our kindergarten through fifth grade elementary level in October of this past school year had 1,497 students, and currently enrolled and placed in classrooms for this coming September is 1,646 students, so that's an increase of 149 children. At our middle school level in October, we had 432 students, and we currently have seated 449. At the high school level, last year we had 609 students in October, and we currently have placed 666 students, which is an increase of 51 students. So overall, at our kindergarten through 12th grade level, our numbers in October of last school year were 2,530 students at the kindergarten through 12th grade level, and this year it looks like we are at, as of today, 2,760. So you can see the increase or the increase that we have at the K-12 level. At the pre-pay to 12th level, we were at 3,502 students in October of last school year, and right now we are at 3,752, which is an increase of 250 students. We have 40 students who are placed out of district for specialized special education programs, which brings our total pre-pay to 12th number to 3,792, which is an increase of 250 students. So we will post these numbers on our website, and we will continue to update them from now through October, and when we have our October 15 report, we will finalize those numbers and ensure that those are consistently on our website until the following year. The next piece of information that I want to share with the board and the community that we're actually really excited about but seems to be generating some questions on the part of parents is our middle school sports program. So as you know, we have had clinic-oriented sports programs at the middle school for the last couple of years, but in September, it will be the first time that our middle school students will have the opportunity to compete in an interscholastic league. So Hoboken Middle School was invited to participate in a Hudson-Birding County Middle School interscholastic athletic league. And as a result of that, we will be offering an array of sports for students to participate in after-school. And in the fall, we will be offering boys' and girls' soccer, girls' volleyball, and co-ed cross-country. In the winter, we will be offering boys' and girls' basketball. We will be also offering cheerleading, co-ed swimming, and co-ed wrestling, which is also part of the athletic league. In the spring, we'll be offering baseball and softball and co-ed track, but at this time, because there is not school availability, we were not able to introduce boys and girls' lacrosse at this time. So we had to pass on lacrosse for this coming year. It's important for everybody to know that in order for students to participate in the middle school sports program, they first have to register and they have to have a sports physical. So all of that information is going to be distributed to parents on August 1st by the middle school principal with directions as to how to register and also how to get a physical for sports. So also important to know that the week of September 9 will be the tryouts for these sports. Once again, this is a travel competitive middle school sports program, so there will in fact be tryouts. The season itself is set to begin on September 25th, and each season runs approximately five weeks. The commitment to participate in the program for students is, for the most part, a three-day commitment. It looks like prior to games starting, the students will participate in two days a week of practice or three days a week of practice when games start, depending on if there's one game a week or two games a week, they will either have two days of practice or one day of practice. So it's really a commitment of three days a week. As a result of the overwhelming interest in the program itself, the middle school principal and our athletic department has decided to keep this program exclusively for our seventh and eighth grade students. As you know, we have sixth grade students in our middle school, but what we are going to do for sixth grade students and also all seventh and eighth grade students who are interested in participating but not, that did not perhaps make one of the teams, we will be hosting weekend clinics in each of these sports to help build skills, teamwork, and camaraderie amongst all of the students and hopefully prepare them for freshman or junior varsity athletics when they get to the high school. And so the program itself is rather comprehensive. The kids seem very excited about it so far, but it has kind of jumped up some questions just because it's new. But I reviewed today a very comprehensive newsletter score that the middle school principal put together that does titleings for everything from how to register, how each child can participate. I also think it's very important to ensure that everyone knows that attendance and participating in these programs if a child makes one of the teams is really important. So if we have 70 students that are interested in playing soccer, for example, and a team is selected, everyone needs to be cognizant of the fact that there are other children who may be wanting to participate on the team. So there will be some guidelines that will be clearly communicated to all campuses regarding the number of games that students, you know, cannot miss, number of practices that students cannot miss, or else a spot on the team would be provided to another child who's really interested in the program. So that's where we stand with the sports program and that information, as I informed one of the committees this past week, will be going out on the office first.
Thank you so much for your report, Dr. Johnson. That's all very exciting stuff, and I know that our middle schoolers will be really eager to get out there and start playing. With that, we will move on to committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report tonight?
Board and public that our audit will begin on August 5th, and I will keep you updated on progress reported.
Thank you for that, Ms. Good. Next, we'll move on to curriculum. Mr. Cronyn, do you have a report this evening?
Thank you, President McGurk. The committee met on the 25th of July last week in attendance with Ms. Catmatory, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. McGurk, and myself. This is the time of the year the board reacts to earlier grant submissions and curriculum plans and the new grant submissions. Approvals must be formally received and plans approved, and the committee recommends approval of all the following agenda items, which are 9.01, 02, 03, 04, and 05. 9.01 is the submission of the NIDA low in 21st Center Community Learning Grant. We have not been approved of this grant. We continue to apply. We understand the process. Unfortunately, we get feedback after each cycle. The committee recommends that the agreement is that we should continue to apply because of the potential high dollar value of this grant. It's worth the effort. 9.2 is the acceptance of the 2024 Expanding Access to Computer Sciences Award. Application is made, grant received, your vote is to accept this grant. 9.3 is approval of the 2427 Language Instruction Education Program. Your vote is to approve the plan, and 9.4 is approval of the local agency guidance for virtual or remote instruction for the district for the 2024-25 school year. The emergency remote and virtual instruction plans checklist have all been submitted. Your vote is to approve the plans. And lastly is 9.5, which is the approval of field trips. There are some other non-voting items that are not going to consent agenda. Training and development, I gave a detailed update at the June meeting, so it won't hear, but with all of the effort that has been put into the update that I gave you with regard to our work with MC and our DA training, you know, our emphasis on this approach is really going to put our district in a place where it's a distinguishing feature, and, you know, we will be competitive with other schools, even private schools for providing these kinds of services, which you expect in the future. Children with certain kinds of needs or certain kinds of focus will want to join our district. The different schools have submitted a number of best practices for implementation. Briefly, there's a half-supported programming. Last year was the arts. This year it was STEM, so there are all of the activities related to that do be around STEM. I would just call out the Beulah Challenger Science Center, which the, which school students who accept the cable have two what they call missions to the facility. This is a really big deal. Beulah requires us to actually go in and have our faculty trained. We have to add a mini curriculum, so I think this is really going to be a robust offering that the committee agrees. Additionally, I would just add that we reviewed the college AP testing results and very excited to report that our total HSS dollars for testing in 2024 started in 2019 and eight with 77, and over that 77, the scores have increased in almost in just every category. So what you see over the last five years is a growing number of award of scholars status and improvement in the overall score. That's really great news, and that is a reflection of our commitment to this curriculum, our great faculty, and our fantastic young scholars. Thank you back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Cronyn. Now we will go on to facilities. Ms. Norwood?
Thank you. The facilities committee met on Thursday, July 25th in attendance for Dr. Johnson, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Delara, Mr. Cronyn, Mr. Callie, and myself. There are no facilities items on the agenda. We did discuss a number of other matters. The Hoboken High School pool has been used heavily this summer for both splash into learning and jump starts and literacy summer academic programs and the district's summer camp runed by the Y W C A. The district has given the city the use of the Hoboken High School pool for the month of August, during which the city is anticipated to run community open swim times. Community members will need to sign up for sessions through the city's red text website. The committee heard a presentation from a potential vendor regarding results in an energy audit of the district's buildings and recommendations for capital projects that would make the district's facilities more energy efficient. These potential projects and potential funding and/or funding and financing sources will continue to be considered by the administration from the committee, and that's where we have the facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. And now we'll go to finance from Ms. Hannah.
Good evening. The finance committee met on Thursday, July 25th at 3:00 P. M. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Norwood, Mr. Fluffel, and myself. We reviewed and recommend agenda items 11.01 through 14.04 for approval. If you look at section 11, you have a number of contracts, including out-of-district placement tuition contracts. We have various service contracts, including miles in our hopes program, transportation contracts for our out-of-district students as well as field trips. We also have in section 11, you'll see a transfer for the LEAP and Passport program as we fell into a deficit. Under section 14, you will see a number of grants, including the extraordinary aid, state aid for homeless students, grants for the non-public schools, which is really a pass-through, and lastly, the 1.1 million IDEA grant, which is for our out-of-state special ed students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. We'll move on to Ms. Catmatory and the governments.
Good evening. The governments committee met on Thursday, July 25th, 2024. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Fluffel, Ms. Norwood, Ms. Angley, and myself. The committee discussed the agenda and recommends all agenda items for approval. As is typical during a serendos, we have a number pertaining to faculty and staff for the summer for the current summer programs as well as the coming school year. In addition, we have approval of four sidebar agreements for the ATA contract on the agenda to address formalization of certain matters for the coming year. You also see the payment of merit goals, both qualitative and quantitative to our district administrators, and approval of the amendment extension of our superintendent's contract, which I'll discuss further in a minute. Specifically, today's agenda includes the following items of note, among others, 10.01 through 10.04 include the acceptance of designations as well as the appointments of various certified staff and higher professionals. 10.06 and 10.09 through 11 include the appointment of various staff for the district's summer programs. 10.07, 10.08 improve certain stipends and staff positions for the 2425 school year. 10.14 includes various faculty and rooms associated with comprehensive training, with comprehensive training in Norton Hillenheim, a program we're very proud to integrate into our curriculum, which you've heard about any time before. 10.16 through 10.17 approves the payment of both qualitative and quantitative merit goals to the district's various supervisors and administrators pursuant to the Administrators and Supervisors Association contract for the 2023-24 school year. We thank our principals and other administrators and supervisors for their hard work in reaching these goals. 10.19 through 10.21 cover approval of rehired substitute teachers as well as the student teacher's internship placements for the coming school year. 10.22 is the approval of cooperative sports agreement with the Hoboken High School for interscholastic lacrosse teams. 10.23 through 10.26 cover four sidebar agreements for items which are not yet included in the current ATA contract but have for which amended or make corrections to it but have been agreed to at this time by both parties in no specific order. The first is to include in the contract a newly created position of teacher apprentice, which will be covered therein. Two of these sidebar agreements relate to adjustments and corrections in connection with the high school color guards, veteran dance team positions, as well as positions regarding and in connection with our theater program. The last adds middle school coaching positions and stipends with contract, which we discussed earlier in terms of our more competitive middle school teams, and as stated, these have all been discussed with and agreed to by the ATA. 10.27 covers approval of the amendment and replacement of the current contract of our superintendent, Dr. Christine Johnson, so as to extend the contract through July 2029. The contract also includes standard and appropriate annual salary increases through 2029, reflecting the invaluable expertise and unwavering dedication of Dr. Johnson to our district and our students for an additional five years. The Hoboken Board of Education believes Dr. Johnson has proven time and again that she is the ideal leader to continue guiding our district toward even greater heights through her dedication to providing our students with programs and opportunities that have made the Hoboken Public School District the highest-performing traditional public K-12 district in Hudson County. Dr. Johnson's continued leadership will be essential as we strive to maintain our position as a premier school district, and we are elated to present the contract for approval tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Catmatory. We're going to move on to wellness with Ms. Norwood.
Thank you. The wellness committee met on Thursday, July 25th in attendance with Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Mr. Fluffel, Ms. Delara, and myself. There's no wellness items on the agenda, and the committee did discuss a number of other items. The New Jersey State Vaccine Preventable Disease Program works to reduce the incidence of vaccine-preventable diseases affecting children by raising immunization rates. The district will be sending a letter home to guardians to ensure that children have their state-required vaccinations. The vaccine program will bring health services to the schools to provide vaccinations for those children needing them. The district will be designating one of the school nurses as a nursing coordinator whose duties will include oversight of vaccination program, medical equipment like A D Ds, CPR certifications, EpiPen training, and parent education. Dr. Johnson covered our discussions regarding no-school sports, so I will skip that update. Did want to note that the Hoboken High School student-led Heart of Hoboken group continues to hold events for special needs children, with the most recent event being held last Saturday night. Finally, the district has opened up Tagliari Field for summer evening pickup soccer games. These sessions have attracted a significant amount of participation from Hoboken children, regardless of their school choice. Thank you very much to the Hoboken High School boys soccer team for assisting with each session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. I have a brief president's report. Want to start out by saying I hope that everyone is enjoying their summer, and I, the one who I did very hard to leave, that in less than six weeks, teachers and students will be walking into classrooms for the start of the 2024-25 school year. I always love the start of the school year, but I love summer, so I guess a little personal conflict that I have to work through in the coming weeks. As you may have gathered from committee reports, summer is not a time of rest in the school district. And on behalf of the board, I want to take a moment to thank Dr. Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Rodriguez Gomez, and the entire administrative team for their efforts this summer. So many exciting things. So many exciting things will be waiting for our students this fall, and I for one cannot wait to see what's in store for the Hoboken Public School District in the coming year. One of the things that is going to stay consistent is the leadership of Dr. Johnson, and this is Katamatory mentioned, who will be going on contract this evening. I wanted to say that I've been here in Hoboken long enough to remember the years where superintendents rarely made it past their first year, and I went back to take a look, and I believe this is the fourth contract the board is entering into with Dr. Johnson. And I think this, you know, goes a little bit beyond leading a school district. I think it symbolizes that the Hoboken of today is an excellent place for families with a strong public school district with professional leadership that prioritizes student achievement while not losing sight of social, emotional learning for the whole student. Our community is a better place because of the success of this school district under Dr. Johnson's leadership, and it is reinforced each and every fall as we watch the enrollment grow, as she just read out in her superintendent's report. We see achievement rise, as Mr. Rania mentioned with the AP scholars, as Ms. Katamatory mentioned for top form of traditional school districts in Hudson County, and we see students succeed. So that's going to end my report. I hope that each and every one of you enjoy the rest of the summer, and we look forward to welcoming everyone back in September. Next, we will go on to public comments on agenda items. And while we get the sheet, I just want to remind everyone that before we open for public comment, over the years, and most recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who are speaking during the public comment portion of the evening. The short answer is the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board party to comments as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not dissolve the speaker from liability for any comments that could be viewed as discriminatory by an employee. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. Board policy requires that all speakers please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation if any. Speakers are allowed in five minutes, and I will ask Ms. Katamatory to be the timer. She will quietly motion to you when you have thirty seconds left. Please address all comments to the chair. Board policy states that the board welcomes comments on matters of interest to the board, but this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debating between speakers and board members or the superintendent. Ms. Waiters?
Hi, Dr. Johnson. Hello. What's up? Good evening.
We can hear you, but stuff is on the, in the second half of the morning. Mr. Stacy Akers coming down to take care of the microphone.
I'm sorry.
It's not your minute, so don't worry. I got it. Children's system. He's getting it. I will restart it. None of this ever happened.
Testing. Hi, um, first of all, I got here at 6:33, so I missed the closed session portion of the superintendent's contract, and I want to thank the administrative. And I want to thank administrative good because I just took today, merit of this, whether for the resolution or the contract, and members of the public for reaching out to me, and I'm only doing this for respect of members of the public, because just like you guys' opinion tonight, they deserve the right to their opinion too. I want to get clues, first of all, because I don't see, it's online, it's online, but they didn't put in the agenda tonight. I will mention my super, the assistant superintendent and the business administrator, real quick. Just due to the fact that your contract, and make sure I write, the July 2024 was best in your, both of your contract. So we did July 2024 date, and I'm doing this for clarification purposes. On the, on the agenda, it mentions it online on the agenda, both your name, you and Ms. and our business administrator good, but it don't mention it here tonight. And the dates and the salaries is what people accidentally confused about because July 2024 is tape off that. So I wasn't here, but what you, y'all didn't vote on it yet, did you? You didn't vote on, alright, so what, what I'm asking tonight is, I know all that Dr. Johnson and the HOPE superintendents do a wonderful job, but just for, to recognize you and Ms. Good, it don't mention salaries, I want to know if you were part of this. Where do you fall with respect to this contract? Okay, is this just Dr. Johnson's contract or not yours and not Ms. Good's? I mean, I don't want to change the thought here, because I don't want to get in a battle or match back and forth with members of the public, and I got like a lot of phone calls. I got emails to show proof, people reaching out, which I feel I'm respected, because I'm my three opponents are sitting on that stage too. An election is slowly approaching. It was mentioned today that I'm an opponent and I'm running. So I'm trying to refrain and keep it professional, okay, and legal bounds, because I'm running against an attorney, so she know. Our integrity means so much in this city to me, and I've been running for 27 years for the board of ed, and I will continue, and I owe my loyalty and respect to the people that live here. And I'm mad because I got out of my bed, my back, and I wasn't coming to no meeting. But I just wanted, for clarification purposes, to members of the public that's watching this, and me as a candidate, and respecting them, okay, and respecting that all three of our opponents, okay, think about this, body movement tonight, okay, because it's an integrity issue, and I want to make sure, like I said, this is within boundaries of the law, because you know that there's an election in less than 13 weeks and four days, okay? So keep integrity around. But you do a wonderful job too, Ms. Rodriguez, Dr. Johnson, excellent, you got a big pair of shoes to fill there, but y'all work together, I'm talking teamwork, and Ms. Good. Ms. Good's job especially is very strenuous, being the business administrator and conducting all the business of the board. I don't know where she went, but right there, I'm sorry, my dress is a little foggy, but I really want to give clues to all of you tonight. I support this contract. I support every penny. I read some of the other things online comparing it with different municipalities. You deserve this change and some, because if I was in your shoes, the people that live in this town, and they know I'm, I'm a child, I would never be, I'd probably be arrested. But anyway, continue to do a wonderful job, guys, and just for clarification purposes, with respect to the dates and the contracts ending and beginning, could you please? That's the only thing I want to know. And real quick with the summer, I don't know if there's complications with the pool or whatever, but I was told that there's no summer swimming, and, well, summer swimming, and I noticed, I didn't hear nobody say that today about the witterphone program. People have come to me, there's no swimming for the summer, or they get out at four o'clock or something, and not as good on the weekends like it was. We do have a little camp with Lewis and the Housing Authority, but I'm worked every day, and I get a group of little kids running past saying, please could we play in your gym? And I said, no, I'm sorry, we got boxes in there, we doing supplies, and the ed don't work, I just make up little like stuff so they will. But we have kids that really want to utilize the pool, if you're looking to that, so, okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters.
So, if I may, Madam President, this is to the legal issues raised by Ms. Waiters, because they're, they're good questions, and it may be something that members of the public are aware of. So, every school employee is eligible for no more than a one-year contract, except for the superintendent of schools. As a matter of law, superintendent of schools has to get a contract of no less than three and no more than five years. The contract needs to end at the end of the school year, meaning the June 30th, July 1st, cut off date, which is indicated here. So, it is not your imagination that it seems the superintendent is treated differently than other employees, but that's because the law requires it. So for business administrators, assistant superintendents, every other school personnel, you can have no more than a one-year contract. Now, there was a timeline for the sky that this administrator had a lifetime contract, and that needed to be addressed, so it could be a little confusing around here, but this is a question that comes up from time to time. So it's not a matter of lack of equity or lack of respect for anyone else, it's simply a reflection of what the law requires, and that's why you see this done in this fashion for a multiple-year contract, the only employee in the district who is not only entitled to have one, but is required. Thank you, Madam President. Oh, yes, and the related question you asked is, why wouldn't we see any other contracts here? So those contracts were voted on at the previous meeting, like all other district employees who are awarded their one-year contract at the June meeting for the upcoming school year that began on July 1st of this year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Callie, already.
Okay, so in terms of swim also, our pool is ending, in fact, a lot of youths. We have probably 150 to 200 kids coming through the pool every single day. In the morning, all of our students who are participating in splash into math and literacy and jump start to literacy have an opportunity to swim in the pool. In the afternoon, up and through, right around, right before dinnertime, all of the children who are participating in the YWCA camp participate in swim in the pool. Then, in addition to that, we notify the city, let the city utilize the pool in the evenings as well for family swim on certain days. I believe, and someone could correctly come on, but I believe the city had to push the date off as a result of having some difficulty getting a lifeguard, but we have offered the pool, but it has started at this time. And then in addition to that, we always run different kind of initiatives for swim, and so this summer we also opened up open swim times for teenagers. That's the one group that seems to ask a lot, can we get in the pool? Can we get in the pool? So we not only opened open swim for teenagers, but also learned to swim, and I did make sure that I sent, we advertised that on social media, we sent something out to all of our district parents, we sent it to leaders and heads in the community, as well as putting it on press release, so that people would know that we did offer that program. Now, the YWCA and the school districts camps are ending within the next couple weeks, and when our camps end, then the city will have the opportunity to use the pool and open it up for even additional open community swim hours. So there definitely is a lot of use of the pool.
Thank you very much for that. Dr. Johnson, Ms. Good, do we have any further speakers on agenda items?
Um, no.
Alright, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
And any items we want to pull? We're good? Alright, Ms. Good, when you're ready, please call the roll. I'll hand you the microphone.
Ms. Katamatory, yes. Mr. Delpho, yes. Mr. Rania?
Yes.
Ms. Tana?
Yes.
Mr. Puppo?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. Furb?
Yes.
Now we will have our public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Patricia Waiters, just in closing, I want to say school is still out. We got another one. Please drive safely, and this is for everybody that's watching, is slow down. The roads is being paved, be a little patient. We got a wait on line to go around the corner. The kids are out, they in the parks, they everywhere, so be careful, somebody could dash in front of your car any second. Just slow down, then enjoy the rest of your summer. I'm looking for a great upcoming school year. The buildings look phenomenal. Mr. Sorafin Koodles got the building shining up, the floors, everything's getting in play for the school year. I hope you all have a wonderful upcoming school year. I'm convincing parents to walk in that door every day. My kid is going to middle school, and I'm like, don't worry, they in good hands with all states. As long as I'm here, we got a good superintendent, we have good teachers, you're going to be okay, and they very nervous, some of them coming into the middle school. So I just give them the positive reinforcement. I'm looking forward to a great September coming up, and keep up the good work, guys. And please, school is out, drive safely for everybody. A friend tell a friend, I'm tired of almost seeing kids getting hit every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters. So the board is going to be going into a brief executive session for the purpose of discussing matters covered by attorney-client privilege. We will not be taking action, so we'll just be closing, coming back to close the meeting. I think we'll probably, approximately 20 minutes to a half hour. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Good, please call the roll.
Ms. Katamatory, yes. Mr. Rania?
Yes.
Ms. Tana?
Yes.
Mr. Puppo?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello. It is now 8:02 PM. We are just coming back from the executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Good.
Ms. Katamatory, yes. Mr. Rania?
Yes.
Ms. Tana?
Yes.
Mr. Puppo?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks and have a good night.